Thank you for coming out. My name is Paul Kayden. I live on Hudson Terrace, and I'm a member of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I'm going to say a few introductory comments before we get into the guts of the meeting. I'm speaking in place of Busher Wright, who's the chairman, who is out of town tonight. And in a few minutes, I will introduce the members of the committee, most of whom are here. So firstly, we want to show you the agenda for tonight and what we want to accomplish. First, what's the goal for this meeting? Let me say right up front, this is the first of a number of opportunities for the public to comment on the plan draft over the coming weeks and months. So we are here to listen, but this is by no means, by no means, the last opportunity to do so. We'll give you the whole timetable, steps and the mechanisms to do that in the course of the presentation. We want to give you an appreciation for the process to date and where it goes from here. And most importantly, what were the key themes that emanated from our work? And then flow into high-level overview of the plan recommendations, which, as you know, are detailed in a very voluminous Volume One and Volume Two. And there are ways for you to get that. We'll recap how you can get that. We encourage you to read it and take the time to go through all the details so you can appreciate it. But we'll be giving you the highlights and the themes today as a basis for comments that you have, whether you've read the plan or not. And then the next steps and the timetable, and then we get into public comments. If you haven't done so already, there's a sign-up sheet in the back table if you would like to make public comments, and we'll pick up that sheet when we get to that stage. So we have a number of the members of the committee here, and I'll just track through the list as it's on the slide, and those that are here can identify themselves. As I mentioned, Busher Wright from the zoning board has been our chair most recently, but most of the time, our chair was Nate Mitchell, who is also here today. Kate Bugallan from the Chamber of Commerce, class Jacob from the Waterfront Resiliency Commission, Rob Johnson, who is not here, also from the Resiliency Commission, myself, who's chair of the Transportation Committee for Piermont, David Levy from the Planning Board, Christine McAndrews from the Board of Trustees, Chris Sanders, former mayor, Bart Shulyn from the Historical Society, Nino Sciureta from our village attorney, Dan Spitzer, who was from the Planning Board early in the process, Bruce Tucker, mayor, and Sylvia Welsh, grant writer, and that title doesn't do justice to all she does for the community. So it's important to note, the constitution of this committee was intended to represent a broad perspective of actual residents, but people who are involved with standing bodies that have studied various aspects of what ended up being part of the Comprehensive Plan. And as you'll see, we've been going at this for a long period of time, and they have been hearing from you and bringing content from what they hear to our meetings. The goals for this meeting, we want to describe how the plan was developed, we want to discuss the purpose of a comprehensive plan, what it is and what it isn't, and we want to cover the key recommendations and highlight the priorities, and most importantly, a new sense of urgency to act on things that may have been identified before but are upon us to act upon now. This is not intended to be a review in depth. Again, that's in more than 300 pages of work that lays out things in great detail. But this is a community project, and as we'll recap, we've had ways for the community to give us your thoughts and priorities. This is the opportunity to do that on the draft, and as I said, we'll lay out other opportunities over the coming times to do that. They can be in person, like in a meeting like this, they can be in written form, which can be sent to the clerk. And as we'll describe, this then gets turned over to the Village Board for their own review and their own public comment. So this is, this is an organic process that is very much dependent on your input. So the plan is available on the website. We're going to work on ways to get it from the library in physical form if you don't have the ability to download it and print it. So we are very committed to making this plan available, and we are not rushing to the conclusion of this plan. Okay, so our process has been going on for almost two years. And it began with listening sessions, community input sessions that many of you attended, on the various topics that comprised essentially the table of contents for the plan. One of the important things is what is the vision for Piermont going forward? Transportation, land use and codes, sustainability, climate change. We even had a booth at the farmer's market for people to put in their ideas, including visitors as well. So this has all been combined with a comprehensive review of tons of data. There's a lot of data that is very helpful to understand what's coming to Piermont and to give us a basis for setting priorities, and a lot of that data is available in Volume Two of the plan. There's been multiple drafts, very constructive but energetic conversation amongst the committee to wrestle down what the priorities are and what kinds of actions should be in and maybe not be in. Ultimately, we have consensus on those priorities that are embodied in the written plan that we'll take a look at. This page we're not intended to actually read, but we thought it'd be impressive to show you the different steps that we went along the way over the last two years that took the community input in and then multiple meetings to kind of wrestle down to priorities. You'll see the detail of this because this deck will be available to you as well. So what are the key themes? And this is, you know, not doing justice again to the degree of content that's in the plan, but they can be boiled down to a few things. And the first is the degree of existential threat that Piermont faces from climate change and our steep slope geography. This is not a new observation, but what we hope comes through in the plan is that even though there's a 10-year time horizon for the actions that we're proposing, there's really a 30-, 40-, 50-year time horizon to what is actually for sure coming to Piermont, and those actions need to begin today to combat those realities. Truly existential threat, this is the most important thing that permeates through a lot of the chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. There's a desire to preserve the character of Piermont and not change it, and there is not the answer to all the questions that that implies, but there's a fundamental starting point, which is Piermont is special place, and this plan is intending to make it work better, face the existential threats, but not change it. We also have the operation of life in the village, and it needs to be smooth and efficient, and we deal with things like transportation in that regard. But long-term is really what this plan is about, and the basis for actions are not looking a couple of years down the road, but are actually looking several decades down the road. So we've been guided in this process by NPV, and many of you are familiar with the organization as they've assisted Piermont in a number of different ways. And Max Doc has worked with us, having done these sorts of plans for many other communities, to facilitate our development of this, and he's going to take you through the other parts of that agenda, knowing that we're coming up to public comment, and we welcome and want those comments, and please sign up on the sheet if you'd like to make those comments. So I'm going to turn it over now.
So I see first, before I start, that there's a lot of people standing back there. We have two chairs here on the window, and we can bring out more chairs from the dais here if anybody wants a seat. You know, maybe you could assemble it by coming in. I have a feeling, yeah, the sign-up sheet is in the back, and please be comfortable. I have a feeling it might be a pretty good amount of time. We're going to talk here. I'm from Nelson Pope Wardies. Somebody once asked me how many comprehensive plans I wrote. I told them none. I do not write comprehensive plans. My company doesn't write comprehensive plans. We assist communities in going through this process. And so all of our plans that we work on are written by the communities, their elected representatives adopt them, usually volunteers are critical, as is this group tonight. It's important to start out with, why do we even do comprehensive plans? Comprehensive plans establish what the official land use policy of a village is. Land use policy controls what you can build, where you can build, but it does go beyond that. It talks about a plan for how we are going to accomplish our goals, our physical goals for the growth of the community, the development of the community, the conservation of open spaces, conservation of important resources to the community. It's broad in its recommendations. We talk about comprehensive plans, we're talking about looking from high altitude at the community and planning on that broad basis. They're intended to be regularly considered. It's not intended that this plan be adopted tonight and control the community for the next 50 years. It's good practice to revisit these frequently, as frequently and every year, to say, where are we in implementing this plan? What can we do to implement it further? Is it still tracking with our vision for the community? And generally, a serious reconsideration, thorough reconsideration should be accomplished, I would say, every 10 years at the latest. And as Paul said, because we want to do that every 10 years, we tend to focus our recommendations on what we can accomplish in the next 10 years, looking forward much farther to the issues that we have to confront. It's a ground-up process, meaning it's based on public input. The committee was formed as early as the summer or fall of 2022. My firm was interviewed back then, among others. We were selected, and we kicked off our process with this group in early 2023 and held five public workshops, which were very well-attended. I'm sure some of you were at those meetings. And based on the input, based on the existing conditions that we received, we recommended possibilities to the committee, the committee considered, the committee comes up with its own ideas, and they put forth this comprehensive plan. In New York State, your zoning must be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And we'll get back to what zoning is in just a second. The other important thing about what a comprehensive plan can do is other levels of government, state and county and other local governments have to consider your comprehensive plan when considering projects for the community. So often, you will refer to the comprehensive plan when you go after grants, when Sylvia goes after grants, and when you're thinking about making infrastructure of the town or thinking about making sewer infrastructure investments, they would look to your plan. And it would also affect things like capital projects, for example, some of the trail proposals that are currently being considered by the county and others. This slide is kind of messy, and what it's really intended is to show you how all of these things relate, the comp plan, the zoning, the state codes, the different boards. The area we're kind of working in here is shown in green up there. It's off to the left side of the slide, and really, you see two boards there. You see the Board of Trustees, which are your elected representatives. They appoint this committee, the CPC, as they have. This CPC prepares the comp plan, recommends it up to them. They adopt that comp plan once they have basically signed up to it, said, yes, this is a good idea for the community. That comp plan will inform their amendment or adoption of new zoning and land use laws. These are your laws that say what you can build and how big it can be, how big your lot has to be, how far your building has to be set back from the street, those type of issues. Now, that zoning and land use law is what controls building in the community. When a applicant comes in with a development application to your planning board, who's appointed by the Village Board, they'll review it against those rules in the zoning, and they will either decide to approve the plan or require changes to the plan, or they will deny it. Along the way, if that plan does not conform strictly with the zoning, they might send it to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they will consider whether to issue what's called a variance, which will allow them to grant a special condition or special case for that applicant to proceed, you know, contrary to what the zoning says. Once it gets through that land use approval process, it goes to the building inspector, who reviews it against the state codes, which cannot be altered. And if all of those rules are followed, a building permit is issued. So I just wanted to give that overview, so that when we talk about what a planning board is or a zoning board, everybody has some background on that. A comprehensive plan is not in and of itself a regulation. So a community needs to act, you know, in conformance with its comp plan, but it doesn't say to a private person, you have to do this or you have to do that. It's a policy document that guides the laws of the village that will be implemented in the future. As we said before, it's not static or unchanging. If it's not serving the community, if things happen that change the needs of the community, it can be amended. It's not detailed in its prescriptions. It's not narrowly focused and says, you know, this has to happen here or that has to happen on this particular parcel. It's a guide to how our neighborhood should be built, not how a particular property should be built. And it's not reactive to one issue or concern. The idea here is to take a holistic look at all of the conditions of the community and develop a reasonable plan that entails all of those considerations. As Paul mentioned, there are two documents that were prepared. The one that you'll want to spend the most time reviewing is Volume One. It's approximately 70 or so pages, and that is where the rubber meets the road. That's our recommendations, our vision for the community going forward. Piermont Comprehensive Plan, Volume Two, is all of that data that we discussed before. It's all of the analysis on traffic, on land use, on zoning, on sea level rise, on flooding. All of that's in the much larger document that I think is over 200 pages. Volume One is comprised of several chapters. It sets forth the vision. There's some introduction that explains how we develop the comp plan. And then it gets into several subject-based chapters that have the goals and recommendations included, land use and housing, climate change, resiliency and sustainability, environmental protection, transportation and mobility, economic development, historic preservation and community design, infrastructure, community facilities and services. At the start of the Comprehensive Plan is a vision. It's about a page. It's three paragraphs, and it basically sets forth the overall condition that we're recommending the community work toward. I have some highlights of that vision, that it be guided by an overall vision of resilience through harmony, that it recognizes the deep and magnificent connection to nature, acknowledging present and future dangers. While we look at the challenges and what can be accomplished within the next decade, we must also be cognizant and plan for existential impacts of sea level rise out to the year 2100. And probably the most operative part of this vision is the final paragraph that says, "Piermont will continue to be an orderly and attractive village, preserving a sense of community and championing a diverse population, providing economic development opportunities and access to a variety of housing options. Architectural standards and historic preservation will be sustained to celebrate the village's historic identity and reflect this unique sense of place. The village's wooden character on its steep slopes will be protected, and areas along the Hudson River and Spark Hill Gap will be enhanced, preserving their unparalleled vistas and providing recreational opportunities for residents and visitors." So the Comprehensive Plan talks first about land use and zoning, but the Comprehensive Plan Committee wanted first to talk about climate change, resilience and sustainability, because this is, in the view of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the most important and critical issue facing the village. So based on research, the goal that was developed is that Piermont address impacts of climate change with more intense rainfall, high heat days, and sea level rise and storm tides, which are expected to cause increase in more frequent flooding over time and loss of buildable land in the future. The village should pursue both adaptation to the changing climate through resiliency projects as well as local mitigation efforts, such as expanding use of renewable energy sources and green building practices. To forward that goal, this committee has identified 17 recommendations, and we're not going to go through those in detail. They're online, you can review them in depth, but some of the keys are to provide a future shoreline overlay mechanism. This would be a mechanism of zoning that looks at where is the shoreline going to be in the future, and it's going to control how development can take place, if it can take place, between today's shoreline and the future shoreline that it predicts. It's going to acknowledge flood risk when the village makes future investments. It proposes that the village continues to be a leader in the flood resilience network. It recommends budgeting, continuing to budget for grant writing for resiliency projects, require higher elevations in flood-prone areas, amend the village codes to acknowledge future flood risk, and incentivize energy efficiency and sustainability. Land use, goal being encourage a land use pattern that reinforces the village's waterfront character and promotes a sense of community through the strengthening of the village. Six recommendations are proposed, key of which are mixed-use development on 9W as a receiving area for SLR impacts. Sea level rise impacts, when I say sea level rise, I apologize. SLR, I mean sea level rise. The idea is that the village needs to have a place in the future, whereas lands that are eliminated because of sea level rise, that there can be relocation to another area, and there was an area on 9W that's currently a school district property that might become available in the future that was a target, hopeful target for that to happen in the future. Also, that land use and density must reflect constraints, constraints from environmental resources, constraints from infrastructure. And probably the most interesting to most people here, that downtown zoning must be consistent with existing conditions. What does that mean? When we look at what we have today, that we look at what residential density exists in the downtown, not what is allowed currently, which is believed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee and the village government to be more than what exists. The heights need to reflect what exists today. The setbacks and the yards, if you were to meet them today, you'd have to build buildings 30 feet off the sidewalk, which obviously is not what we have. To look at ground floor land use, what do we require in the ground floor? Mostly commercial in most respects. Where can we not have commercial? Those types of decisions. And that it also reflects the existing architecture. We don't have cohesive architecture in the downtown, but there are common elements that we want to recreate and hold true to. Environmental protection, the goal being that we want to conserve, protect and enhance the forests, parks, wetlands, watercourses, and Hudson River waterfront, which provide Piermont with its community character as a beautiful village. And recommendations were given, situate development to limit visual impacts, review and enhance our steep slope regulations, consider adopting dark sky lighting standards, explore programs for controlling invasive species, promote native and pollinator-friendly landscapes, explore restoration of the old mill pond, protect remaining open space and address contamination of the Spark Hill group. For transportation and mobility, another critical issue facing the village, ensure the efficient and safe movement of people and goods and promote economic development activities in areas near major transportation corridors while preserving the character of the village. 12 recommendations were identified. Few of them, or the key ones are decrease congestion, improve safety, implement complete streets. Complete streets are streets that are friendly to bicyclists, pedestrians and older people, younger people, people with disabilities. Remediate drainage problems on eerie path, improve wayfinding, consider remote parking areas, elevate roadways and increase access during flooding, explore generating revenue through parking, make Transportation Committee official, continue to police safe cyclist behavior and work with bike clubs and local bike store. Economic development, the goal being promote economic development through a balanced approach to sustainable development that will preserve the village's rateable base and provide existing and future residents with a range of business, employment and housing opportunities without disturbing the reasonable, peaceful enjoyment of the property for residents. Six recommendations are identified. The four key are balanced tourism and resident-supported commercial, acknowledge work from home and increase work from home, continue to regulate short-term rentals, and explore commercial flexibility for downtown. Historic preservation and community design, the goal being encourage preservation of the village's cultural and historic resources and special places, which reinforce the village's unique identity and are a source of pride for all residents, preserve the character of Piermont and the aesthetic appearance of the village. 10 recommendations, among which are continue existing preservation measures, consider additional landmarks, support the Piermont Historical Society, incentivize adaptive reuse, educate the public on the history of the village, resources within the village and resources to assist with preservation, develop the uniform signage style guide, consider Planning Board architectural review, and beautify green spaces and village gateways. Infrastructure, the goal being provide enhanced, resilient and sustainable infrastructure throughout the village, nine recommendations, among which, partner with library and school for wireless access improvements throughout the community and access. Site plan requirements for infrastructure, or that consider infrastructure, harden infrastructure for extreme weather and sea level rise, improve stormwater management and eliminate combined sewer overflows, and work with partners to protect drinking water. Community services and facilities, ensure that municipal facilities and services continue to serve the populations they are intended to serve adequately, and to introduce or expand facilities in areas facilities in areas planned for future development. The plan lists nine recommendations, among which are: improve ADA accessibility to community facilities, modernize village and department equipment, especially communications equipment, support committees, commissions, and volunteer boards, improve resiliency to flood and SLR, sea level rise, excuse me. Add and enhance parkland, open space, and river access. Create inventory of at-risk facilities and plan relocation. So, your comprehensive plan as it exists today, the draft that's being proposed by the comprehensive plan, is promoting those goals and recommendations. We talked about where do we go from here? So, tonight, we're going to listen to everything, what you have here to say. The written comment period for this draft of the plan will remain open through January 29th, which is next Wednesday. If you have any written comments you want to submit, ideas, you can submit them to the village clerk, or you can email the village clerk, who will forward them to this board. There have been some comments already made on the documents that were posted, those are being forwarded to this board. After tonight, the CPC will consider the public input. They may adjust the draft plan in response to the comments that appears tonight. And then, on Friday, the hope is that the plan will be in a condition that it can be recommended to the village board, next Friday, yes, which is the 31st. The village board will take that document, and it'll review it, and it may have different ideas, other ideas, want to make changes. It will do it, revise it, whatever manner it feels is necessary. And then they will begin the process of preparing code amendments and undergoing state environmental quality review. And then they will release that document again to the public. Either it will look very much like this, it may have some changes. And then everybody here, or that's interested, will be able to comment directly to the village board on what you would like to see added, subtracted, or changed. After that public hearing in the future, some future date, hopefully February, maybe March, the village board will consider that input, make any changes in reaction to that input, and then the document will be considered for adoption. While it's going through that process, we will be preparing zoning based on what the village board requests. There are recommendations in this version of the plan to talk about what zoning changes should be made. And at the same time that they consider adopting the plan, they may decide or not to adopt those zoning amendments concurrently or continue to work on them. We wanted to acknowledge the fact that this plan is being funded by several public agencies, the Department of State, Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Water Resources Institute, FEMA, which is part of the Homeland Security Emergency, I'm sorry, the New York State Homeland Securities and Emergency Services also involved. So, now it's time to listen to you. You probably, most of you have been to village board meetings, so you're probably aware of most of the ground rules. The CPC would like you to be civil and respect your neighbors and each other. Limit comments to comments that you have on the comprehensive plan. Try to limit questions to specifics of what you have read. We understand that not everybody here has had the opportunity to go in-depth review. Please feel free to do that review and submit any other comments you may have. Address all questions to the CPC, this is the board that's going to either change the draft plan or not. Please don't have engaged inside conversations, that can be very distracting, both to the court reporter, who's taking verbatim minutes of this evening. You may, you know, everybody likes to, you know, sort of pound home an issue that they agree with. That's acceptable. If you hear something you agree with when you comment, say, "I agree with that sentiment", we just ask that you don't repeat them again and again, because we really want to have the most input we can. We are going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, so that everybody here that would like to participate gets an opportunity to do so. And we ask you not to cede the time. If there's time at the end, the CPC may consider allowing for repeats. We ask you to please submit written comments by 1:29. As we said before, you can drop them off at village hall at the clerk's office, or email them to the email address above here. And that's it. So, do we have the, we have the list of people who've signed up? If somebody could bring it up from the table there? Thank you. If you know your first on the list. And when we get through, through the list of names, we'll ask if anybody else wants to come up. But we just ask that if you haven't signed up yet, when you do come up to speak, that you add your name and address, just because, again, we're having a court reporter take the minutes tonight. Okay, first is Kate McCabe. Yes, please, when you come up, just restate who you are and your address. Thank you.
All right, Kate McCabe, 320 Ash Street. So, I have just, well, I have a couple of questions or comments. I would love for public comment to be left open longer than the 29th. I feel like this is a very consequential change and a huge plan, three hundred pages, so I think people need time to digest it and to digest all the information they received tonight. One overarching question I had about the plan was about the CVM being included in the plan, despite the notation that it's, the law was struck down, but it's still all over the plan and all over the zoning maps for the village. So, I would like to understand what the proposed zoning is that's embedded in this plan, because like you said, this is what kind of codifies the zoning plan for the village going forward. I think that we all realize that we live in a very dense community, and it's often overrun by people, and, you know, different periods of time, different days of the week, so that's concerning. I'd also like to understand what kind of traffic studies or infrastructure studies have happened to understand what the physical capacity of the town is. I lived at the beginning of the pier, we have a lot of issues with sewers. They seem to have gotten worse as more development has happened up in Ninew, and the trees have come out. Where I live, our sewers back up every couple of months, and it becomes a real problem. So, I'd like to understand the infrastructure plans, I'd like to understand if the village can give residents more time to understand what this is, because it is such an impactful, as you said, you know, ten to one hundred-year plan. I'd also like to understand, there's a reference in the plan, I'm just looking for the page, but it says that there's seventy-nine residential units proposed in existing projects. Two projects under review for residential development yielding seventy-six residential units based on current zoning. Again, I'd like to just understand, is that current business B zoning, what kind of zoning is that? And so, I mean, that's what it says in the plan, I screenshotted it on my phone, well, I can share it with you, but I, it's right here.
What, what page is that?
Page nine, January 14th, 2025. That's what it says in the development potential. There are two projects under review for residential developments. It says, "Analysis of developable lands indicates that a full build-out will yield seventy-six residential units based on current zoning." So, those are my questions. Thank you.
I can address two of those points. If you see reference to CVM, please let us know exactly where that is. The CPC did request that it be taken out of volume two, which we thought we had done comprehensively. If we missed something, please bring it to our attention. There should be no mention of it in the plan. With regard to seventy-nine residential units, that was an analysis that was conducted of your existing zoning and vacant lands that exist within the village. So, if you apply your existing zoning to all the vacant land or underutilized land in the village, seventy-nine additional units could be constructed within the village. There may have separately been reference to two pending developments that are before the board. I would say that volume two, if it's a reference to existing conditions, has been ongoing for eighteen months, so that number may have changed over that time. Can I just add that that does not imply, you know, recommending that development, stating what the capacity is under current codes?
I did screenshot a few of these in my phone, so I had the pages, there's a lot of references.
Yeah, if you can forward them to me, I'd be very happy.
There's eight in both volumes. And it's also on the zoning maps, it's still reflected on the zoning maps.
Yeah, so, so, again, I can go through and make sure that there's no reference to CVM, because it was heavily impacted of the CPC following the repeal of that zoning district.
Right, there's a reference that it was repealed, but it's still referenced there seven or eight different times, and in both zoning maps, they're in both volumes.
Well, I'm not sure that the reference that it has been repealed will be removed. I think that's factually accurate.
Well, that's what I just like clarification on, it's been repealed, but it's not clear as to why. And it's still on the zoning maps.
I think you're hearing the intention is it should be removed, and if it hasn't been in, it will be.
Okay, great. And hopefully we'll get more time to review the revised plan when it's issued.
I just want to reiterate, this timeframe for which this board completes its work is only one of several steps for review and comment over a pretty long period of time. So, don't interpret that this is a done process in one week, it certainly is not, as the facts lay out. Let's go to, is it Kathy Covey?
Yeah, I just agree with what Kate said.
Okay, next, Nick Mitchell.
I just would like to thank everybody back and everybody on the committee for all the time, effort, and thought and consideration that has gone into this process over the last couple of years, and also everybody for coming up tonight and sharing their thoughts about it.
Dennis Hardy, 21 Gare Street, former mayor. One, I want to thank the committee for all your hard work. And by your own assessment, it took a couple of years for you to put this together. Lot of time, lot of hard work, thank you. But I think it's unreasonable to ask the public to have comment period of only one week. This is over three hundred pages, there's a lot to digest here, so we really need time, the residents need time to look at this. The vision statement, one of the things that I noticed in the vision statement, although I did see it later on, is there is no reference to open space, preserving open space in the vision statement. That really should be part of the vision statement. Also mentioned about community outreach. I lived in Piermont Landing for many, many years, I never received an email, my homeowners' association never received any notice of any of these meetings. So, just want to put that out there. Mentions planned unit development, that's encouraged in the R40 zone, also known as the school property or the cowboy fields. When I was mayor, we zoned at R40, we changed it to R40 to protect that property from development that you are now considering in that property. The business B zone has served the village well for more than fifty years, contrary to your assessment, and it did not encourage large-scale development that is now proposed in the new CVM zone, that's mentioned many times in the document. Let's start with the floor area ratio, that's just one component of the new CVM zone. So, these are just some of my observations. And the new proposed CVM zone, it encroaches on the previously approved Piermont Landing site plan, and it passed, that will take away open space, that is the entrance to Piermont Landing. These are some of my observations, I look forward to working with the committee in the coming weeks and the coming months to pass a comprehensive plan that all of the residents can agree on. Thank you.
Next up is Ira White.
May I speak from here, or?
You need me up there.
Up here.
It's better for me up here, please.
Okay, fine. Ira White, 100, what's your terms? I just want to address two points. One is downtown zoning, and one is the trail, which is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. This has come up previously at prior board trust keys meeting, but now that we're talking about the comprehensive plan, I'd love to reiterate, when it comes to downtown zoning, and even the committee's desire to preserve what's there, probably paraphrasing, but essentially preserve what's there, it just seems that what is there could be designated historic. Therefore, you could maintain it easier than if you had front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, take a picture of it, that's what's okay. And that's a different approach than open space that's downtown, that would then be required to have setbacks, or however you want to do the zoning to comply with that mishmash that is part of current downtown. But separating what's there and preserving what's there is fundamentally important and different than building, whether it's downtown or somewhere else.
Could you people speak up, because we're in the bathroom.
We have to just take them to the mic. Okay, yes, sorry about that. Other point that I wanted to make is on the trail, I saw that the desire of, I guess it's Rockland County, but perhaps New State of New Jersey as well, and Port Authority and others, to pave the trail was rejected. That's critical. And if that could somehow be regulated, if you made a regulation rather than a recommendation, that would be my hope for the board. Thank you.
Next up is Janice Young.
I just wanted to speak kind of more generally about mass development overall. Okay, so, a kilogram is a thousand grams. Your average car emits about four hundred grams of carbon dioxide per mile. One tree, depending on type and size, cleans up anywhere from ten to forty kilograms of carbon dioxide per year. Let's go with that larger number. One tree can rid the air of forty thousand grams of carbon dioxide per year. One car moving one mile a day creates a hundred and forty-six thousand grams of carbon dioxide per year. We need three and a half to four trees to mitigate one car's damage at one mile a day. How many more cars are we bringing into the village? Children in utero and birthed are statistically more likely to have autism when continuously exposed to traffic-related pollution. What else does air pollution do? It reduces lung function, leads to and can exacerbate asthma, increased risk of heart disease, stroke, cancer, and stress. What else do cars and population do? How about noise population, oh, sorry, noise pollution? Well, not only can these things lead to hearing loss and tinnitus, but it can also cause or worsen heart disease, type two diabetes, sleep disturbances, attention deficits, and childhood learning delays amongst others. And I took this information from Harvard Medicine, the magazine for Harvard Medical School. The village is considering a plan that as it stands will allow for unprecedented will allow for unprecedented destruction deemed here as development. Trees will fall. Grass will give way to concrete. Wildlife will suffer, and so will we. We have but a river, a creek, Talmud, a long path. We are blessed to be here, to hear the crickets at night, to still have starlight. We're at risk of losing that. Why? So that developers can make money at our literal expense in terms of infrastructure and our mental and physical health. No one moved to the historic village of Piermont to wind up in a city. So I urge you, Mr. Mayor and everyone there, to invite us, the public, to more meetings so that we can discuss together what is best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Gordon?
Jeff Gordon, 521 Gare Street. First of all, I want to echo some of the words spoken by other people that have been thanking this committee for all the hard work, all the volunteer work that you've done, considerable work over the past two years in drafting the comprehensive plan. I have no doubt that at least this committee is concerned with the architectural and historical nature of the village and want to preserve that as much as we all do in this room. One of the things that jumped out at me, and I wanted to expand a little bit upon what Dennis had mentioned, is open space. When I look at what I think is open space in this village, whether it's Flywheel Park or some of the other vacant lands that are green, I see green space. I see open space. Those same parcels, significantly Flywheel Park and others, are deemed undeveloped parcels under the comprehensive plan. I think there's about 11 acres of it in the comprehensive plan, if not more. Now, I understand, for whatever reasons, Flywheel Park in along with other parcels, including one of the parcels contained in the triangular lot that has been the subject of so much discourse over the past several months, are deemed undeveloped parcels. I was about to say, for whatever reason, those parcels, including Flywheel Park, were not originally dedicated to the village as they should have been. And how that's generally the practice in other small villages with dedications of open land. Why that wasn't done is beyond me. Is there anything that you have in the comprehensive plan or plan to put in the comprehensive plan, subject to whatever rights the private landowner has, that would make it more difficult to have those open lands, those green lands, those green spaces, significant acreage in the village, much more difficult to develop? I don't think anybody in this room, I don't think anybody on this committee wants to see significant development in this village along the lines of what was already proposed on the triangular lot. A lot more damage can be done when you're dealing with a parcel the size of Flywheel Park to the detriment of this village's character and history. One last point is, it's true, you worked on this for 18 months to two years. You're all seasoned experts in zoning law and land development. You're asking this body of residents, mostly laymen, I would think, to digest a 300-page document in less than a week and have comments on it. So I'm asking for an extension of time for people to comment on and give their written statements and speak at future meetings, which I'm glad this board. This committee has mentioned it's going to be a much longer process than voting on it today because I think a lot of us were expecting this to be rushed through, and I'm glad that it's not. And I want to thank you again for all your reference and time in putting this together for us. Thank you.
Next is Alex Garfield.
Hey, I'm certainly not as sophisticated or grown up as everybody has been, but I got to tell you, I lived up here.
Alex, can you just say your name?
Oh, my name's Alex Garfield. I live at 259 River Road. And I lived up here '90 to '93. I lived up here from '90 to '93 because a friend of mine told me, we've got a magical place up here. And it really was. But I went back into a new business and I had to move back into the city to be in my office by 11 o'clock. And it went well. I sold my business. I sold my place in the city five years ago. And, thank you, Adam. And I moved back up here because it was magical. And then COVID happened. So we didn't really, we couldn't socialize much or do much, but we walked around still. And walking around here, going up to the trail by the railroad, the old railroad station with a friend of mine with our dogs and going into Talmud was just wonderful. And walking down the streets, and my friends all wanted to move up here too. And we want to keep it as nice as it's been, for as long as it's been, so that more of my friends could move up here. And I heard that there's going to be some building or possible building going on down here. We've got to stop that. And, you know, can't have like and I just want to have parties.
Marcy Crowley.
I just got back up with Kate saying CVM is all over this. So it's got to be taken out. And we need more than seven days for the residents to look at this. That's kind of dirty.
I just want to say again, there's a lot more than one week for the residents to take a look at. There's multiple steps here, multiple processes for comments, but we hear you and we need to be sure there's enough time. Next up is Alexis Stark.
Hi, Alexis Stark, 850 Piermont Avenue. So I would like to ask again for an extension on this comment period. This seems like it's the most important one. Everything is going to proceed from here. So we need an extension on this initial period to make comments. It's a very dense document. People are really busy. I've been so stressed out neglecting my children, trying to read through this. And I know a lot of people haven't even started yet and want to. So really, we need more time for this particular phase. So I would love to see the comprehensive plan focus more on environmental protection, preservation of open space on the community, historic preservation. The plan needs immediate and short-term action items to realize these goals. The plan includes many excellent ideas for preserving our local environment and natural resources. You saw some of them up on the slide show earlier. There's a lot more. I encourage you to not just read volume one, really delve into volume two. And however, there are few to no concrete steps in place to realize these goals in the short and in the short term, kind of within the next three years. And as our consultant was saying, you know, 10 years is kind of the maximum this should serve. We really want to be reviewing it shorter. All the goals for the environment seem to be kind of pushed out to that 10-year window when we really should be redoing it. So we want to see environmental goals happening now concurrently with the plan in the short term, not push the way of the long term. I'm really confused about the emphasis on building a new plan to use development on the school district property. As far as I know, this property is not for sale. A lot of it is very important, fragile environment. And our is being used at the moment. And our population and needs of our students are increasing, not decreasing. As a mother with four children, I really do not want to see this school district property sold. Let's see. There's this talk about conforming the zone for Main Street with the current buildings. I completely disagree with that. As so many other people have said, the historic buildings are different. A historic building of three or four stories high is completely different from a new apartment block of three or four stories high. So I do not believe that we want to try to make a new zone for new buildings conform to the historic buildings. It just doesn't really make any sense. I will agree with everyone else. I've gone through this entire thing at least once. CVM zone is everywhere. If you meant to remove it and didn't, that's really confusing. I think the document then needs to be edited. And, you know, again, extend this time period. We're going to need it edited and then given back to us. So again, we need more time. The plan seems to be recommending eroding a bit of the checks and balances within Piermont's government. It appears to be taking away powers currently held by planning and zoning board and giving it instead to the mayor and village board. We need to keep our checks and balances in place. I'd like to see the plan call for a more transparent and robust process for recruiting and appointing members to the land use boards. I also just wanted to point out that we could really use a younger and more diverse comprehensive plan committee. There doesn't seem to have been anyone with children on the original committee. We have a lot of families in Piermont. Values change over generations, and families with children often have different priorities. And for example, younger generations tend to express a greater concern for the environment. So it would be great to include some more people like this in the plan committee. I had a lot of issues with the historic preservation and community design section. Again, there's lots of good ideas, but it seems to only focus on areas that the historic society has focused on. Doesn't seem like an inventory was done of the historic resources for the whole village. It doesn't mention Main Street. It doesn't mention anything north of, north of Main Street. So I think we need a more thorough inventory in that section. And I felt like the plan really doesn't address our demographic diversity. The plan seems really focused on Piermont as a white-collar, high-income, high-education population. That certainly describes a lot of us, but it doesn't describe all of us. And we really need to have our comprehensive plan recognize everyone who lives here. I would also love to see provisions for better communication and transparency. The plan does go into that a little. We need our village to be sending out emails. We need our website to be overhauled. Am I on the plan of Billy? I'll stop. Send more written comments and come to the next year.
Next up is Malia Hayder. Tariq Hayder.
Hi, actually, it's on Queen 86 Piermont Avenue. I'm going to focus on one element of the plan alone tonight, which is community facilities and services. And given the locations of our three primary services, fire, police, and DPW, all in areas that will be significantly affected by sea level rise, I think we need to add a couple of things to the plan. One is, in the inventory section, I am a breath of pride, but I want to see an inventory by service of what we need. I'd like to know how many bays the fire department needs, what exactly the police department needs, and same for DPW. Further, once we have those in hand, and those can be gathered from published sources and interviewing the members of the services as well, we need to locate within the comprehensive plan such that if they are not available today, might become available in the future or that can be appropriately identified for future relocation of these services. It's critical, and we're getting flooded already. So I think we need a little more specificity on that. Thanks.
Thank you, George Rexey, 732 Piermont. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and for the work that you guys put into it. I saw that we are very focused on flooding, but in light of what's happening in California, even in New Jersey last year, maybe there could be some assessment for fires. We're blessed with Talmud. We're blessed with the Evert Trail. And, you know, just to know about the safety procedures and protocols in a situation like that. Also, on the historic part or the, I didn't really see anything related to the pier itself. You know, that's probably our biggest draw. And there was not much talking about how to improve the pier, how to make it more welcoming, or how to make it a little better for both the waste that gets thrown out there, protecting the wildlife that's out there, but also in terms of the use of the pier as a whole. Thank you.
So building in, yes, oh, sorry. It's Peter Kiper at 696 Piermont Avenue. Been at Piermont for 30 years with the Y Company. Building in the area of Combs is very difficult. I definitely appreciate the committee's work effort and trying to actually make it work. Unfortunately, it is very difficult. You just can find countless accounts online on YouTube of this town tried that and this town failed, you know, for various reasons. So what I do hope as part of the plan, I didn't go through the whole planet of it, but I do hope that as part of the planning, it was considered different use cases of different towns. I know that Piermont's very unique, but I definitely, I hope that we are not the first ones to try density, to try the open space. It's my high-level experience that density is always heavier load on taxes than having open space. Open space doesn't cost anything. People do. So more people you put in an environment, the more your taxes, you know, the police, all that goes up. So again, part of the comprehensive plan, those considerations I hope were accounted for in that. The plan, as Marcy also alluded to this earlier, is very detailed on the density aspect, the spare footage, setback. There's a significant amount of detail on it. And it is broad brush stroke on the, on the public amenities, the open space, water access, you know, things that really the selling points that the presentation started off with is, oh, look what this comprehensive plan is going to do for us in the next, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. But again, what is immediate is, oh, let's put some density together with the limits on spare footage and the open space. So kind of my comment. I've been in a few town meetings, and it always surprised me that the, that the property owner has significant rights, well, it's not total, it's right. Significant rights as to what they are allowed to build, what the house is supposed to look like, what their color can be. And our architectural board can only make recommendations. So when the comprehensive plan talks about who we'd like to have architectural consistency with town, I don't see a way today how any of that's enforceable because technically, legally, there seems to be no avenue for Piermont to be able to do that.
So that's everybody that was on the list. If there are anybody else who would like to speak or just get a chance to sign up, come on up.
Good evening. Leander Vasquez, 25 Testor Street, resident since 1997. I didn't put my name on the list, hoping somebody else would have mentioned this. I've mentioned before at a previous meeting that I would like the village to consider acquiring the remaining open space that exists, which I don't think is a whole lot, to maintain it as green space instead of waiting to see if developing. it as green space instead of waiting to see if development will happen. So perhaps as part of the comprehensive plans, we can consider getting a grant or funding to maintain the undeveloped lots that exist.
You can just sign the list first.
Really quick, thank you. Laura Sanet, FIBS, and we're at 28 Stevenson Street. Thank you for all the work and thank you everyone for showing up. I just wanted to know if there was any way that we could have communication, be a little bit more voracious. I would have read it. I checked the Facebook page to keep up with meetings and I think that's how a lot of us find out. Is it legal? Is it a town law that we can't have some email list whereas we get announcements about meetings or we can receive that information? I don't know about that, but I figured you can advise us, but I just wanted to, it would be really helpful for us to receive emails about the meetings, et cetera. Is there? Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, so I have two things I want to raise. One, a suggestion I'd make is that it's usually easier to say what you want than to try and consider all the cases and what we dealt with. So I would suggest, you know, a lot of people are concerned of downtown zoning. I have to make the recommendation, go down the street, take an inventory, come up with a number of identifiable architectural styles that exist, require new facades and rooflines to conform to one of those, right? Give people, give people a menu, say it's got to be our deco, it's got to be streamlined modern, it's got to be one of these six things, not, yeah, we want to have variation in roofline and whatever because we've seen that there are too many ways that people can interpret that and still come up with something that is completely unacceptable for any of the So that's that. But the bigger question I really wanted to address is the 40 zone, the cowboy fields. I think there are several problems with what the plan has to say about that. One is a plan for sustainability that relies on land that doesn't belong to you is really definitely problematic. But for me, the bigger issue is that that is one of the last remaining large areas of truly wild space in the village that is not left. And obviously the marshes is something and you know, that needs to be preserved as well. But a plan for sustainability that gives lip service to environmental protections, but then plans to clear cut acres and acres and acres of mountain is, I would say seriously, flawed and I would ask you...
My name is Steve Motors, 710 Piromont Avenue. Pretty new to the community, 11 years, but grew up down here for the last 50 years. They spent a lot of time here. I was a developer in Rockland County for a long time. Developed a...
Can you speak to the mic?
I developed, you know, right on 9W, a little street called Tree Line Terrace with seven custom houses and we moved a mountain. And we were very careful we didn't have a problem. It took two and a half years to get the project approved and roughly six months per house to get the architectural viewpoint to approve the house. So we were asking all these residents to approve something in a week. I know you've worked very hard on this board because I think you've done a wonderful job, the best you could do. I think there's a lot of people here that need more time additionally, maybe subcommittees or groups here to talk here. There's no way anybody can actually make a proper assumption and understanding of what you're proposing without really having time to have a discussion further than what we have. You've come to this point, you've got one more week. Yes, it can pass your board and we have 19 other boards. Once it gets past the first board, it gets harder and harder and harder to fight eight of them all. I think that also when you're changing zoning, creating areas where the zoning board of appeals will have a tremendous amount of work, but now you've got to create hardships existing with all people within those zones that are going to be able to go around your zone because you've now created a hardship. So with zoning board of appeals, well, if you're hurt and it's not self-created but created by a village, you probably will be able to get your approval done not following the zone. So I just think there's a lot of things that have to be discussed further than just changing the zone for all the repercussions that go with the zone. And I think people here are just asking for more time from the board.
I only have one question and that is, why does Piromont not have a historical and architectural review board when clearly I would say virtually everybody here, it's something that they want? I don't think there would be any objection to that and it seems to be major loss in not having it. Thank you.
Can I have your name, ma'am? Can I have your name?
Rosie Dixon. R-O-H-Y-D-I-X-O-N.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments?
I have something else I'd like to say.
Okay, one other, one other person's ahead of you.
John McInnoye, I've been a resident of Piromont for the past 48 years, 407 Valentine Avenue. And I can remember coming to here about a year and a half, two years ago, being presented all these red and blue green dots. And there was a whole bunch of people that showed up and they went around and put those dots on what they thought was important. Where were you? Somewhere here. I found out about the notice because it was written down in front of the building, which is always there. The notice is always there. So yes, the communications could be a whole lot better, but it's there. It really is. And I shouldn't bring up old things, but I was one of the people that stopped the historical zone from happening because I felt as if I was the one person being targeted that could be controlled. One of the buildings here on Main Street is still old, it still has any of its old characters, something like that. Mind it. So someone's going to tell me what color I can paint my shutters and what color, I go, no, it was wrong. And I stopped it then and I certainly, I'm not excited about the idea, but definitely there's a lot of people here today that care about things, both here and there, and I thank you for all that, so.
Yeah, I can do it from here. There's something that is...
No, 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 no. We're recording, so, yeah. Help me here.
I'm still Alex Starfield. I'm a 74-year-old teenager. There's something that, it bothers me whenever I drive down River Road, the guy's passing me going 40 miles an hour. What do we do about that? And I've seen them all the time. When I stopped at the police station once because I cooked dinner for the fire department last, two months ago, I wanted to do it for the police also, but I haven't done it yet. And I talked to them, I talked to the gal in front about that and nothing happened. In grand view, the signs thank us for going 25 miles an hour. In Piromont, they don't thank us. They just say you're going 25 miles an hour or not. But we've got to stop people from speeding on River Road. Does anybody else see people speeding on River Road?
Yes.
How do we stop them? I tried to cut somebody off from trying to pass me and I called the police and the police got after them. But I'm not, I shouldn't be the only one that is freaked out about that.
Okay, so this is the purpose of this meeting and we have everything you've said recorded. You've been taking notes. We have a meeting schedule to kind of synthesize all the feedback and we encourage feedback via email while we're waiting for the next opportunity to give you the, you know, talk about it, you know, live with us. So thank you for coming out. This is exactly the way the process should work where we put something out there, we get feedback, we make revisions and we go forward from there. So again, thank you very much for coming out.
Will you take up the extension on, extension if you can?
Yeah, that's one of the things we're going to talk about. Obviously we said it's doubtful. Currently, we've heard suggestions to extend and we need to talk about that.
We've got a number of people that you're not, you're not getting notifications of meetings. I'm signed up on the village web, village emails, I'm signed up on PCA's emails. I get thousands of meetings and notices, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out why you guys, are you not signed up for emails across those organizations and you're not signed up? Like, go onto the village homepage, like, our meetings are posted. This meeting was posted there, the draft was posted there. I got emails from a number of people. PCA is like, oh my gosh, because they take the information and immediately push it out. If you're not signed up for the Piromont Civic Association emails, do it. The village sends them as well. GoGo. Piromont GoGo. Piromont GoGo.
So we can put, we can put those locations where you get to sign up on, on the website where our plan is, so there's no ambiguity about how you can get noticed.
So, so did everyone just hear that? On the homepage, on the village website, on the homepage where there's the little box that talks about the comprehensive plan, there's going to be included in there emails that we would strongly urge you to sign up for, as well as the locations of any other document that you, that is associated with this plan. Okay? It'll go to the website, the whole thing.
The transcript of the recording of this meeting will be available to us on...
The logs will.
The audio will be...
Yes, the recording will be available as well.
The transcript will be... Yes. The transcript will be, the audio is not going to be put up properly.